...in the nation. Their leaders say it's paying off in jobs.
We know that we don't have to do the environment or the economy. We can do both, and the West Coast is living proof of that.
Oregon Governor Kate Brown and Washington Governor Jay Inslee. They joined LA Mayor Eric Garcetti at LA's Sustainability Summit to talk about the growth of green jobs in their cities. The mayor says LA City has added more than 7,400 green jobs like solar in the last year, while also reducing greenhouse gas emissions. But this progress is threatened as the Trump administration rolls back on clean energy standards. In California, for example, the White House wants to reduce fuel economy standards for cars.
And that's why frankly, I'm so angry about what's going on in Washington DC. Look, Scott Pruitt has turned the EPA into the Environmental Polluters Association. It's just morally reprehensible.
California and other states are suing the Trump administration for ending climate rules enacted by President Obama. While that fight continues, the panel wonders how to get more people of low income to join the movement for a greener economy.
The green jobs workforce development dollars should be going into our folks coming out of prison, coming back from war, aging out of the foster care system. Because when people see that and they feel it to be something real and middle class, this should be a middle class revolution, not an environmental revolution.
One that creates jobs and might also save the planet. I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The mayor says local governments can also create their own climate initiatives. When President Trump decided to pull out of the Paris Accords, Garcetti co-founded a group called Climate Mayors. So far, hundreds of cities have joined to uphold Paris Agreement goals. Well, they're cute, they're fluffy, and just super lovable. And now here's your perfect opportunity to help take care of one. Rasha Goel has more on what you can do to spread the love with some young kittens.
Do it. You know, sort of like Nike, just do it, you know? Look at these little faces. How could you not want to save these little faces?
Alicia Stevens is a new foster parent who's had the kittens for three weeks, and she says it's been a pure joy.
Look at these little faces. How could you not enjoy this? I mean, they're so precious. And then I think, you know, they're getting socialized and they know how to play, and then somebody's going to adopt them and they're going to be all that.
With the city's pet overpopulation and effort to find them permanent housing, LA Animal Services officials are encouraging LA residents to become foster parents and help take care of kittens until they are two months old and ready for adoption.
We train you on how to take care of, for instance, bottle babies. But the main thing that we need to know is that you have the time and you have the heart to do this, to take care of a kitten. It's very rewarding.
Every year, eight to nine thousand kittens are brought into LA Animal Service shelters. Now, if you're wondering why fostering is important, well, fostering a kitten can help save a life, and it's a temporary commitment.
That population's very prolific, and a lot of times it impacts the shelter. You know, our population increases by three times, it triples. And so it's really important to have that foster base that we can rely on so that we don't have to euthanize.
And to help support this effort, LA Animal Services is offering free cat spay and neuter to all LA residents regardless of income levels for the entire month of May.
People don't realize that the intact female that's free roaming is able to produce 100 cats in a year. She can have literally three or more litters at a time.
So open your home and heart and help save a life. LA Animal Services is also in need of donations for these kitten products. These young ones are just looking for some perfect love. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
How could they be any cuter?
For more information, contact LA Animal Services at laspenuter.com. The LAPD welcomes a new batch of newly sworn officers to its ranks. Gil Reyes reports from LAPD Graduation Day, where we're reminded that physical toughness is just part of the job.
Going out to the field, you guys should be just like you are now for the next year, and you won't have any problems.
Instructors giving final advice to a group of cadets before they officially become LAPD officers. It's graduation day.
That pep talk being given here at the Elysian Park Academy just moments before the actual ceremony. And all 31 LAPD officers are graduating today. Twenty-six men, five women.
City leaders first thank the officers' families. The academy can teach a lot of things, like defense tactics, weapons handling, and emergency aid. But Chief Charlie Beck acknowledges that the most important thing is something only families can teach.
And that is the ability to do the right thing, when no one else is looking, and when it involves somebody that can do nothing for them. To your family and friends, thank you. This is the product of your work and of your life.
Officer Velvet Davis looks forward to getting to know LA's diverse communities.
We don't see a lot of female officers, and we also don't see a lot of officers of color. So that's what I wanted to just personally strive to inspire younger individuals, especially in the inner city where I came from. If they see more of what looks like them, it'll inspire to make a bigger difference.
It's an honor, sir. It's an honor to wear this badge, wear the uniform, and my biggest goal is to make the city of Los Angeles proud.
Congratulations to all the graduates. From Elysian Park, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Also graduating, two officers who'll go on to serve with the Los Angeles World Airport Police. From planting 3,000 trees across the city to cleaning up the streets, the LA Conservation Corps has been an integral part of the city, not only making it a better place to live, but also by giving at-risk youth a second chance. Rasha Goel has more.
It opened me up to actually be a better version of myself, and not only myself, but to help out others on embracing them, to be inspired and to do something with themselves.
Irvin Centeno is excited about his future as he is recognized for receiving the Russell Cantor Next Steps Fund Award at the LA Conservation Corps' annual luncheon. He was once incarcerated and a former tagger, but the organization has helped transform his life and given him the opportunity to create a new life for himself.
With the help of the Russell Cantor Scholarship, I enrolled at Trade Tech where I found out about the signage industry. Instead of tagging, I was able to make the creativity and artistic talent that I have and channel it into career painting signs.
The LA Conservation Corps, a nonprofit that helps transform youth lives while giving back to the community, has been holding this annual luncheon to celebrate its graduates and recognize those who have made a difference.
Think for a moment about the array of programs that the Corps supports. Conservation, obviously, but there's counseling and supportive services and educational programs, after-school programs, the gamut of services and projects that help lift kids up.
Jabri Byers, who was formerly homeless, was also recognized. The Corps has helped lead her life into a new direction. She's been participating in construction projects with the Corps, but hopes to pursue a career as a medical assistant.
Being in the Corps is more like being around families. So it's like nobody has to keep secrets. They tell you exactly how it is and what you feel like you need to change. So being around them, I felt like I had a lot of realness, and like I got so used to people like telling me everything I was doing was okay. But being there, they were pointing out what I was going wrong, but they were also like, you know, training me and helping me to get better at it.
This luncheon has taken place for over the past 25 years, and according to officials, 85% of the participants either move on to full-time jobs or continue on to schools.
The Conservation Corps teaches us that each one of us is a leader, that the youngest, most left-behind person in this city has the same dignity and the same dreams and aspirations and hopes as those of us that have already done well.
For me, the Corps' mission is simple. It's about opportunities and options.
And it truly is an opportunity to recognize there are second chances at life when joining the Corps.
Tomorrow will be better than today, and yesterday was a lesson for today.
In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Park Poor LA is opening up a lot more green and open spaces for families and kids to play in, in the form of community school parks. Anna Marcos brings us the first of four parks that will open to the public.
Shouldn't everybody have a park within walking distance of where they live?
That's the idea behind this celebration, as school and city leaders ring in the first community school park in the city, this one at Harvard Elementary. School-community parks are designated open areas on a school campus that residents will now be able to use during the weekends.
I think it's a great use of the space because we're always looking for places for our kids to play, somewhere that's safe.
Many of our LA Unified Schools are in urban, very densely populated neighborhoods, like the one here. And a safe place to go and play on weekends has not necessarily been the reality of what we've seen.
I grew up here and I have my baby here. We're going to remain in this neighborhood, and we know that there is a lack of enough open space.
The school-community parks will mean more Angelenos will have access to green and open spaces and have basketball and volleyball courts to play in.
We have our children drop out of school, and sometimes because we forgot to think about them, after school, on the weekends. And so we know that this isn't just about health. This is about keeping kids in school, and we always say we want schools to be the center of the community. Now, they actually will be.
The Department of Recreation and Parks will have staff on hand to keep an eye out and promote healthy activities.
Having access to playgrounds and basketball courts, it's how our children develop, not just physically, but socially.
It encourages them to have physical activity, you know, and not just stay at home and play iPads and watch TV.
City leaders say the parks are part of an overall sustainability plan. Among the goals, by 2025, 2/3 of residents will have a park within blocks of their home, no matter what part of the city they live in. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The schools with these community parks will open up the play spaces to the public on the weekends from 10 to 4 p.m., and it's all free. Air quality at the Port of LA has improved dramatically over the past 10 years, but it's not stopping there. Gil Reyes reports on challenges that lie ahead at the nation's busiest port.
The port complex today remains the single largest source of air pollution in Southern California.
Port of Los Angeles Councilman Joe Buscagino lays out the cold, hard facts at the Port of LA's Clean Air Conference, but of course, not all the news is bad.
Over the past decade, we have come a long way as an industry in addressing the challenges and solutions regarding air pollution created by port operations.
The conference, with port representatives from around the world, was about sharing best practices. One launch 10 years ago was the Port's Clean Trucks Plan, replacing old, dirty port trucks with cleaner burning ones. Port officials say it's resulted in a 90% drop in diesel emissions. Another plan, agreed to by the Ports of LA and Long Beach last year, is to go totally gas-free by the year 2035.
We'll continue to advance green technologies in our port complexes, both here in Los Angeles and in Long Beach. We thank you for your continued commitment to social, economic, and environmental benefits of trade. Our economies definitely must grow.
But must also do so in a green way. At the Port of Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
An estimated 1 in 9 jobs in our region are linked to operations at the Ports of LA and Long Beach. Councilman Mitchell Farrell talks to residents about important community issues. The athletic field at Pan Pacific Park gets an upgrade, and your furry best friend will soon have a new place to run off-leash in Eagle Rock. All of these stories in City Beat. Councilman Mitchell Farrell held the first of three community meetings to offer information on issues affecting residents of his district, particularly Glatzel Park, Atwater Village, and Elysian Valley. O'Farrell talked about issues impacting his district, including keeping the LA River clean, traffic, and public safety, among other topics.
The homelessness right now, that's probably the biggest concern. It's just, you know, there's so many people that don't have homes, and what can we do about it, and what's being done, and what can I do about it?
It's really an empowerment piece, and time for constituents to get to understand that their local government is here, available, and accessible.
The City of LA's Department of Rec and Parks, along with Councilmember David Rue and the Bureau of Engineering, celebrated improvements of the soccer and baseball athletic fields at Pan Pacific Park near the Grove. Some of the improvements include new energy-efficient field lighting, trash bins, shade structures over bleachers, and storm drains that will offer security and convenience to park guests. The baseball field was regraded to minimize erosion and improve drainage. A smart irrigation system will provide sustainability for the new lawn and the field. The park serves 15,000 residents living within walking distance. And over in Eagle Rock, groundbreaking was held for a new Eagle Rock Dog Park, the first in northeast LA since the last one was built 13 years ago. Originally left out of the city's budget two years ago, Councilmember Jose Wezar fought to ensure the construction of a new Eagle Rock Dog Park was included as part of the city's 2016-2017 budget. Once completed, the 3/4 acre park will create an accessible, sustainable, and natural space that's safe and comfortable for dogs and their owners. The dog park will incorporate natural features from the area, such as boulders and fallen tree branches, to create agility opportunities for pets while adding a more enjoyable experience for visitors. The project should be completed by spring of 2019. Have you been to the movies lately? Well, one ticket can set you back around $20, and that doesn't include popcorn. But as Gil Reyes reports, Families in Pico Union recently took advantage of free screenings of a film near and dear to their hearts.
Families in Pico Union enjoyed three carnival games, also movie screenings of the Oscar-winning animated film Coco. LA's Coco Carnival was organized by Pico Union's Councilman Gilbert Sadio.
A lot of our families in this neighborhood can't afford to go to the movies. It's very pricey. So the Councilman Sadio has given the gift to the community by showing the movie Coco. We're thankful to Pixar, who allowed us to do this.
You like it?
Yeah!
Three screenings were held at the Salvation Army's Red Shield Community Center, a gathering place for the area's mostly Latino families since 1950. These same families have embraced the film for its accurate portrayal of traditional Mexican values, like hard work, sacrifice, and respect for elders, especially in death.
As Councilmembers said, it's our way of changing those negative stereotypes that are coming from Washington DC, from our president, about Latinos, and we're empowering our community to show the beauty, the culture, of what it means to be Latino.
I see your remosos. Where did you get those?
My nina made it.
Your nina made it? Wow. And how about those dresses?
We bought them.
Wow, they're traditional Mexican dresses?
Yeah.
Mexican pride alive and well in Pico Union. I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Councilman Sadio's office and Red Shield also worked with the nonprofit El Centro del Pueblo together. They provided free carnival rides, food, and toys. Well, come out and support our veterans during Memorial Day celebrations. If you missed it last time, don't worry, Beauty and the Beast returns to the stage in Boyle Heights. And get ready for some Friday night fun as a popular wine tasting event kicks into high gear. All this and this week's things to do. With stunning views overlooking the city, Barnesdale Park welcomes Angelenos 21 years and older to sip wine, picnic, and watch the sunset for another not-to-be-missed season of wine tasting at the iconic cultural destination. Marking its 10th season and attracting sellout crowds, the renowned Barnesdale Friday Night Wine Tastings, the foundation's signature fundraising event, returns to the hill. There'll be a number of rotating food trucks on hand, as well as micro pop-ups. It all takes place on the West Lawn from 5:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., from May 25 through August 31. Barnesdale Park is located at 4800 Hollywood Boulevard. For more, visit barnesdale.org. Come show your support for our veterans during a Memorial Day celebration hosted by the Office of Councilmember Gil Sadio and the Greater Cypress Park Neighborhood Council. All families and veterans are welcome to enjoy the festivities. The event takes place at 11 a.m. on Saturday, May 26, at Veterans Memorial Park in Cypress Park, located at 609 Cypress Avenue. Backed by popular demand, Casa 0101 Theater and TNH Productions present Disney's Beauty and the Beast, the Broadway musical, in association with Councilmember Gil Sadio and El Centro del Pueblo. Performances are Fridays at 8 p.m., Saturdays at 2 p.m. and 8 p.m., and Sundays at 3 p.m. through June 10. Casa 0101 Theater is located at 2102 East First Street in Boyle Heights. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hi, I'm Cindy, and I'm in Little Tokyo, and you're watching Channel 35, Your City, Your Channel.
Good morning, good morning, everyone. Please take your seat. Today is Monday, May 21st. This is a special meeting of the Los Angeles City Council to deal with our budget for the upcoming year. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonn, and Buscagino, Sidio, Englander, Harris, Dawson, Weesar, Carretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Fifteen members present in the court, Mr. President.
Thank you very, thank you very much. The first order of business?
Item number one is the continued consideration of the Budget and Finance Committee report relative to the mayor's proposed 2018-2019 budget for the city, related motions and resolution. The public hearing was held and closed on Friday, May 18th, 2018, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyway, I'm going to kick it over to Mr. Krikorian. But, Mr. Krikorian, before you speak... Anyway, I'm going to kick it over to Mr. Krikorian, but Mr. Krikorian, before you speak, just in case, to make sure I don't forget, I want to thank you and every member of the Budget Committee for all of the hard work that you put into it, all of the city staff, all of the departments that came together to try to make this work. You know, I can't say enough about you and the years that you've, you know, been the quarterback of the budget process. The people of Los Angeles, and Lord knows this council, we're blessed to have you as our Budget Chair. With that said, I'd like to kick it over to you, Mr. Paul Krikorian. In fact, let's give Paul and all of, every, and our staff a round of applause.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Before we begin the discussion of this budget, which you've all had an opportunity now to review, and I think you'll find that compared to years past, it's, it's a little on the boring side. So I want to put this into a bit more of a historical context, both for the newer members and for the members of the public, to take a step back and think about how we got to where we are today. This year marks the 10th anniversary of the collapse of the global economy in 2008, a time when every revenue source that this city relies upon fell off the cliff, a time when sales tax dropped because no one was, everyone was afraid to buy things. Business tax, the grocery receipts tax, fell precipitously because businesses were suffering and many were closing. Our property tax declined because homes were being foreclosed upon. Temporary occupancy tax, down because no one was traveling because they wanted to save, save money. So it was a horrific time for this city. And that came on the heels, just a few months really, after this council and the previous mayor had agreed to renegotiated collective bargaining agreements for all of our civilian and sworn employees, which presented tremendous increasing obligations for the city at the very time that our revenues were collapsing. And that vector between our obligations and what we had available to pay for it created a crisis that this city hasn't faced since the Great Depression. A crisis so great that a realistic proposal was presented on the floor of this council, and thankfully rejected, but a proposal was made on the floor of this council to lay off 6,000 employees. A crisis that was so great that the former mayor of Los Angeles, Richard Reardon, wrote in the Wall Street Journal that it was inevitable that the city would file for bankruptcy. And so we might as well go ahead and do it and get it over with and move on from there. So that was the context that the city faced just 10 years ago. And in the time since then, Mayor Reardon was proven wrong, and we have gradually recovered, our economy has recovered dramatically, the budget has recovered because of increased revenues, because of steps that this city, that this city council has made to reform pensions, to reduce costs, to create cost efficiencies, to consolidate where we can consolidate, to eliminate where we can eliminate. And over the course of those 10 years, we've chipped away and chipped away at that massive structural deficit that we were then facing. We've eliminated now over 85% of that structural deficit, and the rest is within sight. We have gone from a low point where the city had only $127 million in reserves, about less than 3% of the general fund, to the point now in the budget before you, where we're looking at taking the reserve and our budget stabilization fund together, we have a robust 7.4% of our general fund set aside now. $460 million, the most that we have ever had in the city's history, set aside for economic downturns and other challenges that we, we may face. So the budget that is before you reflects a decade's work of discipline and financial responsibility by the members of this council, some of our predecessors, two mayors, and two CAOs and two CLAs, working collaboratively to get us to this point. So that is how we got here. Now I want to talk a little bit about what's in the budget before you, and then I'm going to turn it over to the CLA. So despite that challenge that we faced over the last decade, as I said, we now have the strongest reserve in the city's history. This is important because we are also at the, in the midst of the longest economic recovery in recent history as well. And it is inevitable that there will be another downturn in the economy. It's a cyclical thing. Our revenues are extremely economically sensitive, and so little dips down in the economy have a dramatic effect on our particular sources of revenue. So that's why it's so important to maintain the discipline that we've maintained in ensuring a robust reserve fund and budget stabilization fund. At the same time, though, this is, our constituents have waited patiently, and sometimes not so patiently, for the restoration of services that were cut during those down, that downturn time. And this budget, as I'll get into in a moment, does a lot towards restoring the services that are most important to our constituents. The biggest issue before us, of course, is homelessness. And this budget has, sets aside $430 million for a variety of homeless services, housing, Hope Teams, job training programs, shelter programs, and many other services that are essential to attacking the challenge of homelessness. When it comes to public safety, this budget maintains the police department at attrition levels above 10,000 sworn officers, and it also makes a significant investment in hiring more civilians that had previously been cut from the department's budget, which will allow more of those officers to be able to spend more of their time fighting crime instead of doing civilian work. We've also set in this budget, we have funding set aside to hire 200 more firefighters and to equip the fire department with important new investments, including air support with a, purchase of a very expensive but very critically important helicopter for the fire department, as well as a number of other investments in technology that will allow reductions in response times. When it comes to helping our economy locally, this budget invests in reducing the turnaround time for community plans down to six years, which will allow more predictability in our neighborhoods, more predictability for our business and investment and development community in determining what they can build where. We invest in hiring 20,000 young people by the year 2020 in this budget. We've created an entirely new industry in Los Angeles, in the cannabis industry, and have, we've done our best to try to predict what it will take to enforce the law around in that industry, and also what the revenues will be that will be generated from that industry. That has been an enormous undertaking to try to quantify that. And we're investing in improved procurement for the city, so that the money, that the taxpayers' money that this city uses to purchase things is used in the most economical way that most benefits our local economy as well. When it comes to liability, you all know that the city has had a tremendous increase in its civil liability due to a whole variety of factors. We've focused a lot of our attention on risk management. This budget supports that with over $100 million in our liability claims account, part of which is held back in the UB, but also by investing with additional resources for the city attorney and otherwise to help reduce risks and to combat the costs of litigation. Most of you have heard lots from your constituents about the state of our parks. This budget includes an increase in the number of gardener caretakers, many of whom, we hope, will be hired through our targeted local hire program, so we'll have better opportunities to take care of our parks, better services for the people who use our parks, and an opportunity to put people to work who currently are struggling to find employment. We're investing in bulky item pickup for our parks and expanding the pool season at 15 pools around the city. When it comes to trees, another common complaint from, from your constituents, this budget includes $2 million in the UB for tree services, tree trimming, tree stump removal and so forth. We're hiring a tree coordinator to oversee the continuing development of our comprehensive tree master plan and the delivery of tree services. And importantly, we've put emphasis in this budget on bringing tree trimming services back in-house. Instead of contracting out, we're contracting these services in with our professional employees who know what they're doing, who care about the results, and we're, hopefully, this will be the year when we finally get rid of the second-rate contractors who do often more harm to, to the tree canopy than, than good. Most of us are concerned about the state of our sidewalks. This budget not only continues the progress that we're making in our 30-year comprehensive sidewalk repair plan, but it actually increases funding up to $41 million for sidewalk repair. And then, lastly, animal services. This budget includes increased hiring for animal control officers, so that we can increase response time by the Department of Animal Services when it comes to concerns about strays and, and other animals that need care. And we're increasing, from the mayor's proposal, which had not included funding for our spay neuter program this year, we've added $850,000 to be able to continue our progress towards becoming a no-kill city. So that's just a couple of highlights. The CLA is going to go into more depth as we go through these, the proposals of the committee. But I do, before I turn it over to the CLA, I just want to remind members that the way we do this is the CLA will present the overall budget, and then we'll go through page by page the Budget Committee's recommendations, which are before each of you. As we go through each page, you'll be asked to call items special that you would like to hold for further discussion. If those items are not called special, when we get to the end of the page, we'll consider that page to be approved, and then we'll move on. If you have questions, feel free to ask them. If you have motions that affect the budget, those, I'm going to ask the council president to refer all of those motions to the Budget and Finance Committee for further consideration and vetting, because there are not extra pennies to spend in this budget, and any change means it's a pulling a thread that's going to affect the rest of the sweater. So any impact on the budget has to go to Budget and Finance. You may very well have other motions that are policy issues and other things. Those I leave to the discretion of, of the council president, how to, how to dispose of those, but anything affecting the budget, I will ask be referred to the committee. So with that, I think that's as much as I want to cover it this time. We'll come back for more later. But if you do have motions, again, members, keep in mind, please get them in, they have to be written by the CLA, because there's a particular format that we use for council, for budget motions. So please do it now, because what happens every year is we end up having to hold up the completion of this hearing, waiting for additional motions as they're being typed up and circulated. So please get them in as soon as you can, so that we'll be able to consider them before the end of this hearing. And so with that, I'd like to turn the report over to Sharon So, our CLA.
In fact, Sharon, before you start, just let me kind of, Mr. Krikorian is absolutely correct. Any request or motion that could affect the budget will be referred to Budget and Finance. We've done that, I think, successfully for the past several years. There's no reason for us to change that at this point. Again, members, if you do have a motion, why don't you have your staff begin working on those motions right now, because that is the one thing that stops this process. So with that said, I'd like to recognize Ms. So.
Good morning, council members. Sharon So, CLA's office. The item before you is the Budget and Finance Committee Report on the mayor's proposed budget. Just recall that the entire budget is before you. The Budget and Finance Committee Report contains the recommended changes to the mayor's proposed budget. There are 172 recommendations. Andrea Galvin of our office will be walking through the report with you. In addition to that, there is an attachment with additional reports that were requested by the Budget and Finance Committee, totaling about 120 requests for reports. So with that said, I believe the chair already provided a very good overview. We're not going to do an overview. I believe we should just dive into the report.
Let's dive in.
Good morning, Andrea Galvin, CLA. Mr. President, would you like to start with the requested reports and special studies? That we, we've done that in years past?
Yes.
So these are recommendations R1 through R120. This is Attachment 2, and it goes page 1 through 16 of Attachment 2.
Okay, well, why don't we vote on those items? Let's open the roll. Okay, we'll wait one second. So we're going from R1 through R120. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
15 ayes.
Back to you.
Next, we'll go through Exhibit 1, Page 1. These are where our recommendations begin. This is Page 1, Recommendations Number 1 through 5.
Any specials? Mr. Krikorian?
I'd just like to explain what that is. Every year, the, the mayor proposes an Exhibit H to the budget, which...
We're actually on Exhibit 1, so...
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, that's okay.
Yeah, okay, so we're on Exhibit 1, Page 1, 1 through 5. Let's prepare to vote on that. No specials, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, back to you.
Page 2, Recommendations 6 through 11.
6 through 11. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Page 3, Recommendations 12 through 21.
Open the roll, close it, tabulate.
15 ayes.
Page 4, Recommendations 22 through 27.
Let's prepare to vote on this item as well. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Page 5, Recommendations 28 through 33.
Let's prepare to vote, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Page 6, Recommendations 34 through 43.
Okay, we're on Page 6. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Page 7, Recommendations 44 through 54.
Just messing with you. So that's Page 7, 44 through 54. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Page 8, Recommendations 55 through 63.
Let's prepare to vote on Page 8. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Continue.
Page 9, Recommendations 64 through 70.
Let's prepare to vote, open the roll, close it, tabulate.
15 ayes.
Continue.
Page 10, Recommendations 71 through 75.
Page 10, members. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Continue.
Page 11, Recommendations 76 through 85.
76 through 85 on Page 11. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Page 12, Recommendations 86 through 90.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Page 13, Recommendations 91 through 93.
Page 13, members. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Page 14, Recommendations 94 through 100.
Let's prepare to vote. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Continue.
Page 15, Recommendations 101 through 105.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate.
15 ayes.
Continue. We're on a roll.
Page 16, Recommendations 106 through 111.
106 through 111. Page 16. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Page 17, Recommendations 112 through 118.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate.
Page...15 ayes.
Thank you. Page what? Go ahead.
Page 18, Recommendations 119 through 123.
Page 18, members. 119 through 123. Let's open the roll. Let's close the roll. Tabulate.
15 ayes.
Page 19, Recommendations 124 through 132.
Let's prepare to vote on these items, or this page, rather. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Page 20, Recommendations 133 through 139.
We're on Page 20. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Page 21, Recommendations 140 through 149.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Page 22, Recommendations 150 through 161.
Okay, we're on Page 22. 150 through 161, members. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Page 23, Recommendations 162 through 167.
Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Page 24, Recommendations 168 through 172. We actually have one correction on this one.
Okay, I'm going to recognize Mr. Kukorian.
Well, let's hear what your correction was because it may be the same thing.
It was for 169B. I have a page number correction. It should read Page 969 instead of 967.
Okay. And then 169C should be clarified to apply only to the Crisis and Bridge Housing Fund.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on that. This page, ask corrected. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That brings us where?
That brings us to Attachment 1, which is Exhibit H. These are implementing instructions and ordinance changes, H1 through H4.
Okay, so on those items, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Please continue.
And with that, we would call, we would talk about items that are called special at this point, but I don't believe there were any.
No, there are, there are not.
So, Mr. President?
Go right ahead, Ms. So.
Yes, so we do have a first packet of motions that we are copying right now that will be distributed shortly. There's probably about a packet of 12 motions. These would be amending motions by your members to amend the Budget and Finance Committee report as well as the mayor's proposed budget.
Okay, well, Mr. Kukorian, I think we should recess for about three minutes. We'll get those motions, members. So please just kind of hang around. As soon as those motions are here, we'll jump right on them.
positions within the Department of Recreation and Parks. This item has no general fund impact.
Okay, so with that said, why don't we just go on and vote on this issue? Motion number one, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Please tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Continue, Madam CLA.
Motion number three is a Rodriguez motion relative to instructing the Housing and Community Investment Development Department to report to the Housing Committee on the impacts of delayed executions of the community development block grant contracts for the Healthy Neighborhood Market Network program. This is a report and no impact to the general fund.
Thank you. So let's vote on this as well. So Madam Clerk, if you please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Please continue.
Motion number nine is a Rodriguez motion relative to the upgrade of a position authority within the Information Technology Agency relative to the citywide data science and predictive analytics team. This is no impact to the general fund. The funding for this would be absorbed within the departmental budget.
Okay, we'll vote on this item as well. Let's, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay.
Motion number 10 is a Price motion relative to establishing a $2 million line item in the unappropriated balance for the sidewalk vending program. This does have a general fund impact.
Okay, so Mr. Price will refer this item to Budget and Finance. Continue.
Motion number 11 is an instruction to the Department of General Services with the assistance of the CAO to report on the feasibility and cost to conduct an audit of existing custodial services contractors to assess compliance with wage and hour laws. This is a report, no impact to the general fund.
Okay, so on this item, let's vote on this. So Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Please continue.
Motion number 12 is a Corretts motion relative to the General Services Department Custodial Facilities Services. The Budget and Finance Committee transferred $5.5 million to the unappropriated balance. Mr. Corretts is asking that half of that money be restored to the department to allow them to continue to provide services as they formulate their report back to council relative to taking those services in-house. This has no impact to the general fund.
Okay, let us refer this issue as well.
Councilman, this has no impact to the general fund.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. Let's vote on this one.
I think we can go ahead and approve that.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
It's okay. You're having a good day. All right. Let's go on to the next one.
Motion 14 is a Rodriguez motion relative to providing nine months' funding for additional firefighter positions to staff a fast-response vehicle at Fire Station 91 in Solmar. This has zero general fund impact. It is reducing the reserve for mid-year adjustment line item to provide funding for this item.
So you want to add it to go back? So we'll refer that to Budget and Finance.
Motion number 15 is a Ofero motion relative to providing resolution authority for three street services investigators to launch a Hollywood Boulevard First Amendment program. There's no funding attached to this one. We assume that this is an unfunded authorities for the department, so it has no impact to the general fund.
Mr. Budget Chair?
I'd like to ask that be referred to the committee.
Okay, so let's refer that just so that you can dig a little bit into that. So we'll refer that to Budget and Finance. Continue.
Item 16 is a Harris-Dawson motion relative to providing funding for a C-3 program in Council District 8. This motion also has no impact to the general fund as it is deleting or reducing
Okay.
...
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 Okay.
... This motion also has no impact to the general fund as it is deleting or reducing the funding in the unappropriated balance for the homeless services programs.
Okay, we'll refer this one. I believe my note, we'll refer that to Budget and Finance. Mr. Kocorian?
Please.
Then continue.
Motion number 17 is a Buscaino motion relative to directing the CAO with the assistance of the Harbor Department to identify harbor-controlled properties that could be used for homeless-related services, including safe parking and storage. This has no impact to the general fund.
Let's move, let's take action on this issue. So, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Next item.
Motion number 18 is a Price motion relative to actually reestablish swapping out funding for one project to two different projects. It has no impact to the general fund. This would reduce funding within the Council Community Projects line item and establish funding within the GCP for the Project Save and Central Ave Jazz Festival. This actually has no impact to the general fund. I actually would suggest that we make a slight change to this, and that would, rather than putting money into the Cultural Affairs Budget, that it be placed in the general city purposes budget as a new line item, as the Cultural Affairs Department does not receive any general funding. This is a general-funded item. It was already established in the budget, and we would recommend that you establish a new line item within the GCP.
So let's amend that into this request, and let's
Set it okay.
move forward on the vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate.
Fifteen eyes.
Item 19 is a Wesson motion relative to adding a footnote to the mayor, to request the mayor and city council to enter an agreement with a designated nonprofit to utilize community-based organizations to assist with the local update of census addresses. It provides a series of other recommendations. Funding is already provided in the budget. This provides just additional recommendations as it relates to that funding.
Okay, thank you. I think we should move forward.
I'd like to call for a no vote on this. You knew I was messing with you. I'm just trying to keep it interesting, Mr. Clerk.
Just coming from Mr. Kocorian, that's just so out of left field.
No, that's
I need somebody to bring in a defibrillator. My heart stopped for a moment. So let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Motion number 20 is a Coetzé motion relative to adding resolution authority for a senior management analyst position to provide financial administrative support for the Public Works Trust Fund. This would be accomplished through a decrease in the contractual services account of the board.
You know, this looks like we should, unless you've changed, that should be referred back to Budget and Finance, just to look at it for a little longer. So that brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings us to Motion A and B. These are the closing recommendations, motions that instruct your staff to prepare the budget resolution for consideration of the council. The budget resolution is what finalizes the formal adoption of the budget. We expect to have the budget resolution working with city attorney and CAO within the week.
Mr. Kocorian, do you want us to vote on it and then maybe make some ending remarks, or do you want to kind of lay this out?
Well, Mr. President, there should be a Motion A and a Motion B, but only Motion A has been circulated so far.
No, we have both. I know, I have
Well, I guess I'm the only one that got left out, so.
And that
As long as everybody has it, that's, thank you.
And that was me messing with you. No, everybody, everybody should have the A and B at this point.
Yeah, we can go ahead and vote on those matters then.
Okay. Can we just take them up together, or should we continue? Let's do them separately. So let's go with Motion A. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Now, this vote on Motion B. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Now, Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I told you it was boring. This is, I think, a new record for speed in which the council has approved a budget during the big budget day. I think we're inside of an hour and a half, which breaks our record. This is the first time in anyone's memory, I think Sharon was telling me, others were saying that in over 20 years, they don't recall a budget in which the council has not called a single recommendation of the committee special for further consideration. So, thank you all for that. But I think the ease with which we're approving the process today is really, it's like the tip of the iceberg, where you don't see the rest of it that's underneath the water. The rest of it that's underneath the water is the work that so many people in this building have done for many months to get us to a point of having a budget that is, you know, is boring and is kind of a consensus acceptable budget. And I think just starting with the degree of vetting that happens in the Budget and Finance Committee. We met for over 33 hours over the course of several weeks. We heard from 44 different heads of departments, bureaus, city agencies. We received over 100 public comments. We heard from the Neighborhood Council budget advocates, you all did, representing over 96 different communities. We heard from our labor partners who have a seat at the table during our budget hearings. This committee asked for and reviewed and considered 165 separate budget memos over the course of that hearing. And I do want to thank the departments, all the departments and the CAO's office. All 165 of those memos got done on time and were considered without delay by the committee. So we did a tremendous amount of work before today's hearing, so no one should think that the speed at which this was approved indicates any kind of a lack of vetting, because there's certainly been a great deal of it. But in addition to that work, I do just want to take a moment to thank so many of the people who made this possible. And I'll start with the CAO, Rich Llewellyn and his staff, particularly Ben Seha, Jacob Wexler, Janelle Irving, and the Budget Memo Squad that, as I mentioned, got all 165 memos done on time. Never happened before. Of course, our incredible CLA Sharon So and her staff, Karen Calfean, Andrea Galvin, Roy Morales, and the rest of the team. It's a big team that does a lot of work that never really gets seen, but it makes everything seem seamless once we get here, and we can't thank them enough. I want to take a moment to thank, of course, Mayor Garcetti, who worked more collaboratively with this council on this budget than I think I have seen a mayor work with a council. And this was, it was a really good budget to start with. I think we made it a better budget, but it was a very good collaborative process. And I want to thank Matt Zabo, Miguel Sangalang, and the entire mayor's budget team. And I want to give special recognition to John Chavez, who will be retiring two days from now after 28 years of service to the city, and thank you for your great work on this last
Let's give him a round of applause. And Mr. Kocorian, he still looks as young as he did when he came here 28 years ago.
The Budget and Finance Committee works effectively because of our clerks, and I want to thank Richard Williams and Erica Poulst for putting up with us and so much. And I also want to thank each of the Budget Committee members who, this is, this is a very hard-working committee, very difficult committee each and every year, even in good budget years. It's a difficult, time-consuming assignment. So I want to thank my colleagues on the committee and their staffs for making this possible. So, of course, Councilmember Englander and Brenton Tesler in his office, Councilmember Bonin and Tricia Keen in his office, Councilmember Coetzé and David Hirsch in his office, and Councilmember Blumenfield and Jeff Jacoberger in his office. Thank you all for the work that you do, not just during budget season, but all year round to make sure that we maintain our financial discipline and good health. And then, of course, I want to thank you, President Wesson, for entrusting each of us with this responsibility, and your deputies Andrew Westall, Ed Johnson, and Justin Wesson, again, for making this such a seamless process. I want to thank all of our general managers and department staff for your contributions throughout this, countless other people who work behind the scenes to ensure that this work is done effectively. And then, if I may, I want to just take a moment to thank my entire staff, my Chief of Staff, Arina Brinosian, my entire policy staff and field staff who contribute to this process, and most especially for the, for our seventh budget together, the man that makes all of this happen, Matt Hale, my Budget and Policy Director. And with that, with that, Mr. Wesson, I think at just before 11 o'clock, we're done for the day.
Let's give everybody another round of applause. And I'll just say that I want to thank all of the other council offices that weren't on the budget, because your deputies did, were engaged with the deputies that were on the Budget Committee, and I just have always believed that when we come together as a unit, we can do more, and I think that's what's happened. So this is good work, everyone. One more round of applause. Thank you all. One more real And I don't believe, but I will ask, is there any additional business before this body today? I don't believe there is. This meeting, special meeting is adjourned. Thank you again.